I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Tonight's meeting is both being both video and audio taped. If anyone else is video and/or audiotaping, please let me know now. Okay? Thank you. And we'll go to minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes from March 24, 2015, March 25, 2015, and March 31, 2015, as unwritten.
Second. Motion is made and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye. We'll go to old business. Miss Melo, any old business?
No.
Okay. We have a couple of things. We had a question come up pertaining to $100 or something like that for the two vehicles the police department turned in and what the cost was as far as to auction them. The town received $1,350 for both vehicles and the cost for auctioning was donated. There was no cost. Therefore, the entire proceeds of $1,350 would go into free cash. I'm trying to think if there's anything else. Oh, yes. Ms. Bellrose, you asked last week about that. I did pull the letter that you sent back on February 4th. The chief did have it. I talked to the chief and the chief, we agreed that it was going to be sent to the town accountant. The town accountant did indeed go over and look at all your questions. We were assured by the town accountant that everything is correct. I can try to give you more of a, more info as to why, but I'm going to have to have the town council write everything down.
Okay.
She gave us, gave it on an eight and a half, 11 sheet of paper that where all the things were listed. She broke it down, but complicated. I'd rather have it explained. I will have that for you.
That's fine.
Okay?
We did give her a copy of what Mary, Ms. Bellrose said presented us, the map. A copy of your breakdown.
That's correct. And the questions on this were answered on the piece, on that eight and a half by 11 or eight and a half by 14 piece of paper, but it's just, you have to kind of know what the initials stand for. So I'm just going to ask her to break it down.
Okay.
Okay?
Fine.
Okay. Any other old business? We will go to comments and concerns. Anybody wish to address the board? Yes?
I have a question. The vehicles that were auctioned off, I'm questioning why they were auctioned off that way. I know Mr. Salt just brought us up last week and having seen what the damage or the repairs was, I actually tried to go online and I tried to bid on that. And I went online, I filled out all the paperwork, I did everything. I have a business license and they wouldn't, that site would not let me on to bid on that vehicle. So I'm curious why it was put on a closed site like that. It kept on telling me you had to have this special type of license to bid on it. And I mean, I'm, I thought it was, you know, like a sealed bid type of thing. Everybody would have a chance to get it. I mean, I kind of had allocated quite a bit of money thinking that I wanted to try to pick up that truck.
Mm-hmm.
And again, it would not let me on. And what I find surprising is the website, 15 minutes before the auction closed, still said that the highest bid was only $150. So going forward, I don't think any town property should be auctioned off in a very restricted manner like that because it's not fair to anybody in the town who might want to bid on it.
I don't disagree. I think what we'll do is see if we can find out information as to why you weren't able to go in and we will see what we can do in the, if indeed it was, wasn't available, as you say, we'll have to find a new way of auctioning off the last, the next time.
It said, the only way that, since my business didn't have the right type of license, which I don't quite understand what kind of license I would need, it said that I would have to go to a broker to buy the vehicle and cheapest broker I could find was going to charge me $700 to put my bid in for me.
I wish I could answer the question. I don't know the answer. I know that I did call, I did call the chief, as I said I was going to, and was told that the, it was open to anybody that wanted to bid on it. Now I'm going to have to go back and ask more questions as to if that's not true.
And I have, and I have another question. Why, why, you know, I, I tried to find out who bought it, you know? If it was going to go to somebody who was fixing, I might be still interested in buying it. And they said they didn't have to tell anybody who, who the purchaser was. And I thought that was kind of strange because in a sealed bid, you know, you post who bought it. So...
I'm not sure on that one either. Yeah, I'm not, we'll see if we can find it. I'm not sure on that. I do know, we did have a letter that came in from the board pertaining, that came in from the chief of police. It's available if anybody wants it from the selectmen's office. It just goes into what they got for it and so forth. And one of the reasons why they auctioned it. And I'll just read the first paragraph. It says, "Dear members of the board, when I finalized the purchase of the new Cruze's, I asked the salesman at municipal headquarters about trading in the 2004 Taurus in a 2005 Expedition. He informed me that courtesy he would send a flatbed tow truck to pick them up, but would not allow any trade value based on the condition and age of the vehicle." That's the reason he went the way he did it. It goes on to talk a little bit more about why he, why he didn't sell it for scrap and so forth. The letter's available if anybody wants it.
Well, yeah, you would explain last week why he couldn't go to scrap and I understand that. But, you know, having looked at some of the repair, like the latest repair quote, the last one we had on it, I thought that was pretty short money to fix it.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, I mean, the auction was saying it was only $150, 15 minutes before the auction closed because I actually had it on my work computer watching it. And I mean, that was real short money for a vehicle that I just wanted to bounce around and use to go to landfill and everything else. So I'm really surprised that it was put, I mean, it surprised me that it was put on that type of auction because that's not really fair to anybody in the town.
It should be available.
Could you have actually gone in person to Copart and bid on the vehicles?
I don't know the answer to that. No. I don't think so.
No, you had to do it online.
I don't think so. I think you had to do it online. But we'll, we're going to get a lot more information and based on what came up, we'll ask the questions. I don't know the answer, but I, I think.
His bid was $150, like she said.
Yeah. I think that you couldn't go there. I think you had to bid online.
Yeah.
But we'll find out.
And you had to become a member. It's a, you had to become a member and then when you filled out all the information, then it's first, then you went to try to bid. It said, "Well, you're not licensed," whatever. So then I put all my business license information in and then tried to bid again and it told me that I didn't qualify.
We'll find out. Any other comments and concerns?
Has the departments ever tried to, this, this system over the internet? I've never seen this done before. I went to see the people and I asked them specific questions. And the last question, I said, "Who? What? We do not have to know the ball job. What's the problem?"
We'll see if we can find out.
I think this is the first time since, since we've been to town.
Why did you do it this way? That's what I don't understand. The other word worked well. All the people were involved. They had an opportunity. This way nobody had the opportunity except select people.
We, like I said, we'll look into it and we'll, if it's not, if it wasn't done the way we think it should be as far as everybody being able to bid on it, we'll just change it for the next time.
We'll first get the information.
Yep. We'll get the information first. Any other comments and concerns?
Yeah, I have a few, a few questions. One is, has there been any update on what's going on with candidates tonight? You have, because you were, you know, you're still looking for a moderator or whatever. I just didn't know if you had any update for that.
That, did we receive any? No. We haven't received any regarding your moderator.
About moderator, no. We do have a question.
We do have questions. So we're still looking for a moderator.
I volunteer. What do you want? I have to write, put it in writing?
Yep, to our office.
Not a problem.
And what was your second question?
All right. Well, that was, okay. Thank you for answering. And the date's still the same, Tuesday, the 28th?
Yes.
Or whatever that Tuesday was. Okay.
Yeah.
Six p.m. or seven p.m.?
I think we said six.
Six o'clock.
Okay. All right. And the other thing, my second question was, we, my nonprofit based out of the town of Warren here, we had purchased the 2000, 2006 Ford Crown Vic and that was through a sealed bid. And we ended up paying $2,512 for that, which was top dollar. So I guess I'm a little confused. So I was at the capital planning committee where Mr. Delansky, you were at the capital planning committee. And the chief told us in front of everybody that he, two or three times, and it's on the videotape, I've watched it multiple times, that he said he was going to scrap the vehicle. And at the end of the meeting, I raised my hand and I expressed interest for my nonprofit to basically purchase the vehicle. And I just find it suspicious that after the chief said two or three times in front of the capital planning committee, you as a board of selectmen member, so that he was going to scrap it. And I questioned him multiple times about trading at MHQ and he said, "Oh, I'm not doing that." So he was admitted that he was just going to scrap it. And then I find it suspicious how magically two days later, somebody in town says, "Oh, they're now going to auction it and sell it." Well, I find it funny that I was the one that said, "I'd like to buy that." And then all of a sudden, the chief changes his mind. So I don't, so I'm confused on that aspect because the chief had admitted one thing, but when I say something, then he changed his mind. And then at the same time, I also tried to talk to the committee, which you wouldn't allow me to speak at that committee, where I was going to complain again about the, the issue with the 2006 Ford Crown Vic, that it brought in money for the town, it brought in revenue. And then there was, you know, there was a problem that we, that myself and my organization had with the chief of police over it. So I don't understand that why when you auction these two vehicles off, you completely do something different for, for a public auction. That was not a public auction instead of doing the same thing that worked effectively and financially efficient for the town as before to do sealed bids.
Let me say one thing.
So my question is, whose decision was it out of the three of you or Lorena to do it that way? Because it obviously wasn't Copart that approached you and says, "Oh, we'll sell it this way and we'll do it for you." So, so one of you three had to make that decision to use Copart. And by going to the website, it says that you have to be some type of used car dealer or something to have a license because that's how the auction vehicles off. So I already knew in advance that this system wouldn't work. So that's my question to the board is, I know it wouldn't work. The three of you either knew it wouldn't work or whatever. So, so somebody deviated off the path and did it that way.
Let me say one thing. One thing you're absolutely wrong in what you said. You said that you had asked the chief, Rahova chief, you wanted to buy it at the capital planning committee. The only thing I can tell you on that is you're absolutely wrong. The chief had left the capital planning committee. And the reason I didn't want to talk about it because the chief wasn't there and you tried to go to the capital planning about a purchase that had nothing to do with capital planning. But the chief was already, had left the room.
Well, yeah. Well, that's what I don't understand. You were not the chairman of that committee and you stopped me from speaking.
Wait a minute. I did not stop you from speaking. What I said to you.
Oh, yes you did, sir.
What I, no, you're wrong. What I said to you was, I was not going to participate in that action because the chief was not there and it was not the right of the capital planning committee to do it. I am not the one that said you couldn't speak. That's wrong. Just, Jerry?
Yes, I was, I was the one that said you couldn't speak because I'm the chairman of that.
Right.
The reason, the reason why I did not let you speak is because the chief already walked out and could not defend himself.
Right.
Okay? So I didn't want you picking on the chief without him being there to defend himself. And that's the reason why I said, knock it off. And also I closed the meeting.
Right. No, I agree with you. I agree with you 100%. I'm not saying you're at fault. Right. And then we, and myself.
Well, the thing.
No, it had nothing to do with you. You did everything correctly and not blame you. I'm just, because we then came back and I was in front of the board of selectmen and I tried to mention the 2006 Crown Vic car again, Mr. Delansky. And you wouldn't even allow it to talk, you wouldn't even allow me to talk about it here because I had filed a complaint that I felt that the chief, the police chief had defrauded the citizens of this town when he sold the car. And you know the story because I filed the complaint from you and you wrote me the letter saying that you wouldn't discipline the chief of police for lying to the public. So...
I never said that, first of all.
Yes, you did. I have the letter.
No, I'm sorry. Show me the letter. Show me the letter. I'm going to see the letter or I said.
You mailed it to me.
I don't want to see the letter. Show me the letter.
Well, I don't have, well, I mean, no.
Well, then I don't want to, then I don't want to talk about it. Next question for comments and concerns.
Well, that's exactly what you keep saying. I don't want to talk about it.
Because you have, show me the letter. I deny the fact that you've got the letter.
I'm not talking about the letter. Everything you say I've answered.
Enough. Enough, please. I'm going to tell you, enough. Any more comments and concerns?
So you still want me to answer the question about?
Sean.
Is there any update on the highway department and that rejection?
The investigation is still ongoing. We will have something in the near future, Sean, but we, we ask for a complete investigation and a totally written report. We will have everything ready to go very shortly.
A couple of weeks ago, Mr. Lavash was going to down to the highway department and address some of the issues. Has that happened?
That, that. That happened, but it's going along with the investigation. So we'll...
So that's not a separate report. It's going to be a combined report?
It could be combined, yes.
All right. This, this issue will come up back in December at Robert Trump's board and we're now into April. This thing is just slowly dying its own death unless something starts.
Let me ask a question, please.
Yes.
I know he's talking about the highway department, but I was, in all that's been going on, I was under the impression that there were times that the, the expedition that had a rejection sticker was actually used with a rejection sticker. Is that true?
From what we seem to understand, that there was a vehicle on the road. What it was, I don't know. But I know there was a vehicle on the road with a rejection sticker. That's correct.
So that brings me to my next point. I was reading the Quayback Current and in the Current, there was a man recently, they list the man was charged with, it says driving with like under a rejection sticker. So I think that's kind of like a, you know, I, I think to put it on the police log and then we might've had the police doing it. I mean, I don't think that's really good for the town. I mean, I just read it and thought, that doesn't even sound right.
Boy, I absolutely agrees with you. All departments have been instructed that if there, if it, there is not a valid sticker on it and it is not fit to be on the road, we do not want it on the road.
But the chief did report to us that no calls were logged on the vehicle. So, you know, we did receive that from the chief. But going back to your question about the auction, you know, the reason why I didn't scrap these vehicles and why the chief made this decision is because first you got to remove the fuel cell, the oil, the freon. There's a lot that has to come out of the vehicle before you can salvage it. And by the time all of these things were taken out and the cost, we probably would have been upside down on the cost and probably owed money based on what the value of the car was. So the, the, the decision was made to auction. Now, we did answer Ms. Bellrose's question regarding, we are going to get information from the auctioneer to find out why it was made available to the public. That's something we need to look into. But we will, you know, receive that information and report it back to everybody. But that's why we went with the auction rather than the salvage.
I just want to clarify something just a, there is a way that place auctions cars to the public because on their site, they like have like a certain day of the week that it says, "If you're a public person, you can come on that day." And it's all, it seems like it's a regular option. Anybody can go. So, I mean, the website kind of says they do do that, but these, this, these vehicles weren't, I guess, in that group.
Yeah. The, what Mr. Nardi just said basically about the scrap and so forth, in the letter, I told, I read about the amount of money we received and so forth. That's covered a little bit in there too. So you can learn more. All you got to do is ask for a copy of the letter and we'll happily give it to you. I could read it if you want.
No, that's fine.
But it's, it's, that's the scrap part of it and why the reason to go to auction and what the cost would have been if we tried to scrap it, that's part of the letter.
Yeah. See, and for somebody like me, I think scrap is, you call 1-800, give the kids a car and they just come and take it. So my idea of scrapped is like, you know, somebody takes it on the back of a wrecker. So, you know, understanding what he just said about what the cost was, I can understand why you didn't want to just put more money into it and not get it back.
Yeah. But that is available also. Any other comments?
Back on March 3rd or 5th, we met at the tower for the chimes and the bells. There were five of us all together and discussed a potential from the burden company to come down and analyze the problems and recommend what could and could not be done. These people have since contacted me twice. And I'm looking for a date as I requested previously, two days specifically, same week if possible. They will come up. They called me, they wanted to come down the first week of April. It's just too late. I'm requesting two days in May. And there were no minutes presented for the meeting that we had back in March.
We'll, we'll give you two days.
Consecutive or whatever?
We'll check and see when, when we can possibly do it and.
How they advance, be asking.
It'll have to be after the end.
It has to be in the...
It'll be after, but we will, we'll give you two days.
Because one of these days it'll happen to come free.
Yep. Nope. You can mark that down. We'll get, we'll, we'll give you two days.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anybody else? Yes?
Yes. Can't you, myself, Mr. O'Brien, emergency management directors, can't you guys requesting an article for our, you got a stipend for both of us. And we just want some reason why it was rejected and why it couldn't get put on to, for the townspeople.
We put on the one for the extra $500, if I remember right. We put the one on for the extra $500, I think, in their, in their budget.
For, Mr. Chairman, at the meeting, we discussed with the board that the board would consider the $500 increase the line item budget.
Yep.
And it would be finalized at the budget meeting.
So we're going to look at that, more than likely that $500 will be in. We are not adding any more positions, paid positions, whether they be stipends or any other position until at least the fall special town meeting. If we want to know more where we stand financially. And most, a lot of the items are moved to the fall because we want to know where we stand before we do anything. We're not okaying anything until then.
Okay. So the fall.
The fall, it still has a possibility it could be on once we find out where we are.
But the 500?
The 500 is in the budget. Well, will be in the budget.
Will be in the budget.
Yep.
Or is there any further discussion this weekend?
We will have more of a discussion this weekend, but it, as of right now, it's, it's on. Yes, Sarah?
Two things. I just wanted to update the board with the condition of the ambulance. The ambulance was returned to service two days after the incident happened with it. Fortunately, it did not end up being an engine malfunction, which is what we, we all indications pointed that way. It actually was a vacuum pump. It was replaced with Sarat Ford and is back in service two days after that. So it was relatively reasonable money to fix that, including the tow out there, but we were, we were back up and functioning there. I also wanted to just update the board that April 16th, I will be traveling to New Jersey to do the final paint inspection on the new ambulance and everything that comes with that. And then there will be one other final inspection at the very beginning of May and we're looking at a delivery date of May 15th on the new ambulance. And my second question kind of has to do with what Mr. McKeon, and I understand the board is, I also received a memo regarding two, two positions that I had put in for. And I understand, I guess, what the board is saying with regard to it possibly being moved to the fall. But I would just like strongly urge the board to take a very good look at those positions that I put in for, one of them being a full-time firefighter EMT position and the other one being a call chapel position. I have a lot of numbers to back it up. You know, we're, we're busier. You know, this is, we had this position back in 2009. This is not like a brand-new position. We had this position. We have been down in vacant position for six years now. And it's becoming increasingly hard for us to operate and maintain our service with that. But our call EMTs are, have other jobs. They, they cannot do the hours that they once were able to do. I mean, and it's putting a strain on all of us. So I really would like the selectmen to strongly consider that position, you know, at least in one of the future, our, with regards to the call chapel position. I had spoken with this gentleman several times with the selectmen. He's been waiting for two years now to get on this. We've never had a chapel before. He's a licensed, licensed counselor. He'd be a great addition to our force. I've had two incidents in the last month, in the last month alone where I've had to call in team some members to counsel members of the department. We had a terrible fatal up on the Mass Bike. We had a suicide and unfortunately it affected some people, some of my people, you know, greatly. And this, this gentleman could help tremendously with that. He's been waiting. I was told it had to go to an annual town meeting because it was creating a position. And now I got to tell him that he can't, you know, we can't have that. So I'm, you know, I'm a little bit confused as to why that happened. So I would just like the board to consider strongly their position on those, on those two things. At least even if it's moved to the fall, that's, I don't necessarily have an issue with that. I just want to make sure that they understand the need and why I asked for those two positions.
I think we understand indeed. And I think that we will again consider that for the fall. We're basically have no idea where we stand right now with the, with the regional school district, what we're going to have for money or anything else. So we just don't want to put something on that next year we'll, we'll have to cut.
I understand that, but just with regard to the call position, this is not a full-time. It's strictly a call rostered position. I would have a stipend attached to it of $1,000, just like the firefighters do basically. I mean, he is, he has to keep up on his certifications and everything for the counseling part. So this is not an astronomical amount. I was just hoping that, you know, at least that one could go on there so that we could get him enrolled and into the process where we could have our, you know, cement, you know, an outreach for our people when they're facing any kind of a, of an emotional or mental health situation.
Any comment?
Yeah.
Any comment?
Well, we're going to, go ahead.
Yes.
Can you share a chaplain with another town?
There are, there are certainly, there is options out there and there are teams that we can call in. However, this is the first time that we've had somebody that is in, in the position where they want to actually join our department. And most departments have chaplains at this point. And like I said, he's not just, doesn't come at it from, from a chaplain's point of view. He's also, he was a firefighter at one point and he's also a licensed counselor. So I just feel that the need is there because he's, the reality of the PTSD calls and the, and the trauma that these folks go under all the time after these calls, you end up, you know, facing it one day or another. And to not, you know, to, to have someone like that in your arsenal is, is a great advantage when you need it.
Mr. Chairman, I wouldn't lie, look at it again.
Okay. We'll look at it on Saturday.
We'll look at it Saturday.
We'll look at it again Saturday. Yep. Any other? Mr. Porter?
Is there any information available on a question that was posed a couple of weeks back pertaining to the plowing of snow across roadways by property owners and contractors?
That was whether or not there, not, not whether or not there was complaints, but whether or not anybody was issued a ticket.
Yes. The question was, was there any citations put out and what was the outcome of the, what is the account on the citations that were issued?
Do you know the answer to that?
I do not. I do know it was, it was definitely a problem this year with the amount of snow we had. Some cases, it doesn't interfere. Some cases, it does. I know in one particular instance, there was a resident where I called personally myself at least three or four times last year and at least three or four times this year.
Joe, hey, I know you're here. Could you find out for us tomorrow, please, and give us some type of a letter? Send a little email or something stating whether any citations were issued and how many complaints were made?
Sure.
Thank you very much. We'll have it for you.
Will that information be available by next selectmen's meeting?
Joe, I believe that can, we can come up with that. We'll have it for you.
My, my tail comment on this is the highway survey indicated that in some instances it's a problem and some not. I don't believe that the enforcement of town bylaws is discretionary. The bylaws are written for the good of government. Those are the people that live in the community. If we're going to be leaving this up for interpretation, I think we need to revisit the purpose of the bylaw and not leave it up to be a discretionary function.
All right. We will have more discussion on Jimmy once we get the report too. Thank you. All right. Igor.
On the light of note, at a no cost to the town, I'd just like to inform the board that we have the two openings at Warren Public Advisory Committee due to one person leaving and the other taking a clinical absence because of sickness. So just want to inform you that we're going to, if that's okay, put advertising on the screen. They'll be looking for two new members.
Any worries? Any problem?
Nope.
That's fine. Yep. All right. I'm going to go to correspondence.
Lenny Moore will be holding a public hearing on Wednesday, April 22nd, 2015, at 6:45 p.m. to consider the adoption of three proposed zoning bylaw amendments. For information, for more information, excuse me, please contact the Lenny Board Office.
Mm-hmm.
A letter from the Warren Public Library, a letter from the Warren Public Library was received expressing interest in the idea of town ownership of the libraries, which was recently discussed in a meeting. They feel that a non-binding referendum at the annual town meeting could be useful to gauge people's interest in proceeding.
I don't have a problem with it.
I don't either.
It sounds like a pretty good idea, actually.
What's involved?
Would strictly be a request from the moderator at some time during a meeting as a non-binding question as to whether the people would approve of the warrant library becoming a town ownership. So we just have to check with Vinnie on that and say we'd like to do that. It was a request. I think it's a good idea. Any problem, Bob?
Nope.
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Grant opportunity under the Baker administration for the 2015 Sustainable Materials Recovery Program. Mass D P is holding informational assessments across the state during late April and early May. Additional information may be obtained by contacting the board, the board of selectmen office.
Okay. Tom, you're up.
I'm here on your request.
Well, we have one thing. There's two things. It's for the Mathlon Federal Grant.
Oliver.
Okay.
Give us a little information on that.
Um, thank you, Lauren Arda. Uh, Mr. Gerton represents a company that helps communities secure tip projects. I had met with him and some members of Mass D O T on some of the roads I was looking at for a possible tip project down in the future. Those would include South Bridge and Maple and Brimble Road, otherwise known as Route 19. After some discussion with them and a... and a ride along in the field, we had come up with the best conclusion for the TIP project to go after would be basically from Reed Street on Route 19 and Brimfield Road to basically Washington Street-Bemis Road intersection. And that would be just a total rehab of the road, repair surfaces, drainage, curbs, sidewalks. Pretty extensive project. Reasoning for that was basically to break down the three areas to cut down the cost a little bit. Cost for the project would be very significant. To my knowledge, the TIP programs do take a little bit of time to get going. Mr. Running out his name again, please.
Oliver.
Mr. Gerton had approached me before, piqued my interest, and I finally got to meet with him with that. As where it stands now, that he is looking for a contract from the town to utilize his service to obtain the TIP project.
Now, let me ask a question. And I read the contract, I didn't read the whole contract, but I flipped through it, and there's some charges in there per hour to use their people. I guess my question would be, where would you anticipate the money coming from to fund the contract?
That could be, I could possibly probably take some out of the general highway. I could take some out of drainage. I could take some out of resurfacing because it's all for that purpose. I believe some of it could also come out of Chapter 90, depending on what the cost was. That would be something that I would try to avoid so I could use all the Chapter 90 money towards road projects.
I just, I looked at it, and I don't remember all, all the figures. I know some of, some of the amounts, $175 an hour, and then they go from there. I know there was a list of about six or seven different hourly rates that were going to be there. And you say it's to try to get something on the TIP project, on a TIP project?
Correct.
Let me ask this question, Tom. The TIP projects list is done through the Central Mass Metropolitan Planning Organization and CMRPC.
Correct.
Those projects are usually booked, right now, if I remember right, we're doing 16, 17, 18, and 19. You don't, a town can submit without having an engineer or anything to put projects on that list. You don't need somebody to advocate for you because the different subregions, West Subregion, North Subregion, East Subregion, and so forth. And there's a representative from town sitting on those committees, okay? Right now, I sit on the one, I represent, I forget how many towns, 10 or 11 or something, okay? And that's how we got the downtown project, and that's how we got 67 and everything else. I guess my question is, do we really need to hire somebody to help us do that? Or can we be an advocate on our own right to get something put on the TIP? What you're looking at now is now, is four, five, or six years down the road.
Correct, if not one.
Okay, and a lot of it depends, the projects that don't cost a lot of money get on, get on a lot easier than a project that costs a lot of money. Could we put this on hold for the time being and see if we can have somebody from Central Mass talk to you?
Absolutely.
If I give you a name, you can call him at Central Mass, and that's Rich Rydant, R-I-C-H, R-Y-D-A-N-T. He's been out in this town before. And he works at Central Mass Regional Planning, and he can explain to you how to get things on the TIP and so forth. I'm going to a meeting tomorrow night, actually, at Metropolitan, at Central Mass. I will tell him that you, that you will be calling him, and there's some other people in it. Jonathan, I can't remember his last name now.
If I didn't have another meeting, I'd go.
Jonathan Church, Jonathan Church? Anyway, if you call, they're gonna be very familiar with, with the town of Warren, and Rich is the one you want to talk to right away. And just kind of get information from him. I will talk to him tomorrow and ask him to send some information to you.
Okay.
And just put this on hold. I'm not saying no to him.
That's fine.
Just put it on hold for the time being.
It's gonna be a way out anyways, if you could just forward his number to the renter and I can get it tomorrow.
Absolutely.
That would be perfect.
I will do that.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Okay, now, Tom, we asked you to come in for a couple reasons. You submitted six articles? Six articles?
Four from the, yes, two from previous.
Right. Now, I'm gonna go to six first, because this is gonna be easy.
Okay.
That's the offset, snow and ice. We're not gonna do anything on that for the time being. We don't have to. We can deficit spend that and clean it up at the end of the year. We don't have enough money in, in, to have requested through finance committee to get a rat for that. So we'll have to wait on that.
So will that be something that's encumbered into my next year's budget, or?
No, no. What happens is that right now, we have about $60,000 in free cash, Tom. You're about more than that over the, over the hump. So we don't have the money. We can't reason appropriate everything because the tax rate's been set already. So because of the fact we don't have it in free cash, we just won't take any action whatsoever. And when all the figures are done at the end of the year with the cherry sheet and everything else, and we find out where we stand with free cash and where we are under two and a half, it'll be taken care of there. So you don't have to do anything.
And some of the MEMA reimbursement that we'll hopefully get.
If we get the MEMA reimbursement, we're going to see if we can apply it to that amount.
Okay.
Okay? But that's the reason we're doing it.
That's fine.
Have we applied for the MEMA reimbursement yet?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
I've submitted all of my numbers as of March 6th. I did a follow-up about a week ago with my MEMA rep, with the person I was in contact, and they were still waiting on final confirmation from the feds as far as I, at this point.
We're, we're taking that into consideration too, once we know where we stand. And also what, what the requirements they set on it. Sometimes we have to let it go into free cash. Sometimes they say you could spend it. So if they say, if the board can vote to spend it, we can put it, put it against that?
Yeah, according to the conference call that I was on with MEMA, there was definitely some different avenues at the town.
So we're just gonna wait to see what those are. All right, so we have five other things. $60,000 for a used street sweeper. We weren't in favor of the intent article for that yet until we know more information. I think we just need information from you.
Okay.
We have your articles, and we know that, that the, there was coolant in the radiator system with cream-colored thin slugs and so forth, but we're really not quite sure what the problem is with that.
Correct.
So what we really need to know from you is what's the problem? If you could find out what it is. If it's a cracked block, then we really gonna have to do something. If it's not a cracked block and it doesn't burn oil, which is what you indicated.
Yeah, it doesn't seem to be burning oil on recommendation, just to let everyone else know and the board. I did do a sample of the coolant, came back with no oil in it. The mechanic did a pressure test of, not a pressure test, I'm sorry, test to see if there was any exhaust in the antifreeze. That came back as negative. And hopefully, with everything going on, it could be just a case where the coolant system was just corroded with stuff. So it's been flushed. Sweeper was out today for full day. Was gonna do a complete flush of the radiator again. And as I said in the note there, it's gonna be monitored closely and see what happens. But in any event, it is an older sweeper. I know you have discussed an issue with it before, where it's something that we do need to look into replacing sometime down the road.
And I think that waiting for more information, again, we're putting off a lot of the capital purchases, Tom, until the fall, again, for the same reason we explained.
Totally makes sense.
Know where we stand before we do anything. So that, give us more information, and the board will look at it and see what we want to do with it.
Right. And that's kind of why I had it on the article too, is because I know one of the reasons where we were, the tests were originally coming back where it could be as simple as a cracked head gasket to a cracked end and block. Still won't totally find out on either one of those until we start taking them all to pot. So hopefully, with a little love and generosity, we can make it through this season.
Very good. Now, the second thing you got on here is three options for a V-style spreader truck body change. And we just, we went through the various options, and we know that one's $50,000 for option one. Then you got $40,000 for option two, and then you got for option three is $12,000, and we just want to know how feasible these options are. If all three options are feasible, I think you're gonna look at the $12,000 one.
Correct, which is the way, the way I would kind of go too. But it just depends on where the board and the townspeople want to go as far as the future. It's, I'm actually looking to replace the body, not the spreader.
Mm-hmm.
So that's a 2001 International. The body has fiberglass on it now. I will not get a valid inspection sticker, bringing it up as it is now. This body is not worth putting the money into. My option or suggestion is a stainless steel front drop spreader body. It'll discharge material in the front tires, making it safer for the operator. It would also allow the operator to plow and spread at the same time, which can be done now. But the, the better thing with the front drop spreader is it puts it out of the left side of the truck. So the truck can stay in its regular travel lane and stay on both sides of the road. Where the way it's done now with a rear drop center spreader is the truck has to drive down the center line to drop the material. So you can't really plow and spread at the same time and avoid traffic and so forth.
Question? Question?
No.
Okay. So let me ask this. As I said, first, the one you just described is $50,000. The next one is $40,000, and the difference is it's, the first one should last for a certain period of time.
First one would be stainless steel.
Yeah, the second one is just.
The good, the good thing on that is if we eventually get another truck in the near future, which is also gonna be something that would need to be addressed, this body can be swapped over. So by purchasing it now, it would save a little bit of the cost for a truck. So we could spend $50,000 now for the body, just to use easy numbers, where a new truck set up with a body plow spreader would be $170, say. So this could essentially drop the price from $170 to $120 in the future, still hypothetical. That would be a stainless steel, which was option two that I had. Option one, I'm sorry. Option two is the same body, but steel. Still good, but it's not gonna have the lifespan, span of stainless wood. And the third option I have is to just completely remove the body that's on the truck now and make it a permanent sander. So I would lose the, I would lose the capability of having a dump truck, but it's, it would be for a lot less money, and it would still be a plow spreader.
What would the fact we took the dump truck out of play do to you?
It depends on what was going on. Overall, overall, for the, for the short-term shot item, option three would be the best option because it's less expensive. In the future, looking long haul, probably option one. That's why I gave the three options to find out which way the board wanted to go, as well as see what option the townspeople wanted to go for the funding.
I only have one question. You said that option two is only steel, but in here it says stainless steel.
Yeah, I was just gonna say.
Option one is a stainless steel. Option two is steel. So it's $50,000 for a stainless. It's probably about $40,000 for a regular steel.
Any question, Bob?
No, I think the difference between one and two, I'd definitely go with one, but right now, I think we'd look at the wall.
Which is why I put the options up there, just to show the different avenues on how I was looking with the dollars of the town and so forth.
We'll discuss them Saturday.
Yes.
I mean, I don't.
We will discuss those. We'll get back to us after Saturday on that, okay? And it might be that whatever we decide is not gonna be put on until.
That's fine.
I'm just letting you know.
Correct.
All right. Article three is for $6,394.22 for line painting. The question we had on that, now, do you have WARP funding?
Can't use it.
Are you positive?
I confirmed that today.
Excuse me?
I confirmed that today without Chapter 90 rep.
Okay, well, I answered that one.
That's kind of what I thought too, but when I heard Lorna say that you guys were thinking that, I said, yeah, that would be good. But it has to be from this window.
My suggestion would be then, if that's true and we can't use that funding, that we include Article three on the annual town meeting. If we're gonna put $6,394.22 for line painting, if we put it on in November, it's kind of ridiculous. So is that consensus?
Yes.
Consensus, we'll put, we'll put that one on, Tom?
I can discuss that a little bit further if you guys wish at some point too.
All right. Next one. Install catch facing cleaner on truck. Gotta give us information on that one, Tom.
I recently found out about two weeks ago that the town of New Braintree had an auction for a 1990 Volvo 10-wheeler, automatic diesel Cummins truck and chassis. They, it was a fire truck. It was a pump truck that they replaced new. I heard about it from a fellow co-op member. I looked at the truck with my foreman. It is in very good condition, condition. Options I have is as being part of the co-op, or just individually town-wise, is to find out what, what they're looking for for a bid, where we can take the current vacuum truck that the town owns and install it on this truck for an option one. I know the bid that they rejected was $10,500, I think I have it in here. $10,500 was the bid that they received in February that was rejected, which obviously means they're looking for a little bit more. Truck only has 6,900 miles on it. It is old, fire truck, usually well taken care of, not in snowstorms every winter. So one option was to take our vacuum truck and put it on that. The other option, which would have to go through the co-op with more people involved and boards, which is a little more complicated, but it still could work out in everyone's favor, where we could put in a bid as a co-op, where each community would put in a dollar amount to purchase the truck and install Warren's vacuum system on this truck. Another option with that is depending on the, what we, what the town decided to put in for a bid, Warren could just use the vacuum body that we have as their bid. So we would basically be donating the vacuum portion to the co-op to build a truck for all the communities, which might not cost us a thing, depending on what the co-op wanted to do and the other boards within those towns.
Okay.
The reason I put it on here is because it's something that we're gonna kind of jump on with town meeting. I didn't put in an article, because this is gonna wait till the fall. Not a problem at all. We can find out more information on costs, as well as seeing what communities are interested. Comments?
I don't, I don't know. I don't like using our equipment and using it as part of bid process. I mean, we already have a piece of equipment and then.
Our vacuum truck right now is non-existent.
Well, the first option was we were gonna place a bid and use our equipment, and the second, our second option was to use our equipment as part of the bid amount.
If we, if we purchase the truck and use our equipment, it's a town of Warren's. If we use our vacuum truck as collateral or part of our bid for the co-op, it would be a co-op piece of equipment. But as of right now, I have, we have no vacuum truck due to the fact that the power motor on the truck does not pass emissions.
All right, let's look at that on Saturday. We'll let you know after Saturday. And other than that, Tom, I think that's all of them, but you did have another one, but you just hit on it. Donate the vacuum, the vacuum base.
Correct. It's, it's two options on Article four.
So we will look at that on, get back to you.
I know, just for your notes, I have five communities here. Brimfield, Brookfield, Hardwick, Westbrookfield, Eastbrookfield. Brimfield Superintendent is interested. Brookfield Superintendent is interested. Hardwick Superintendent is interested. Westbrookfield is a possibility. Eastbrookfield is not sure. And then with all of us, it all depends on what the cost would be. And then with all of us, it all depends on what the cost would be and is it worth it?
Mm-hmm. All right, we will let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in, Tom, thank you for the explanations, that's basically what we're looking for.
Do you have any idea when the co-op is meeting again?
As of right now, there is no set meeting.
All right, we will go to Arbor Day proclamation.
Arbor Day proclamation, excuse me. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Warren proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting of trees and. Whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce erosion of our pests, our precious topsoil by the wind and water, lower our heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. Excuse me, and whereas trees are a renewable source, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our cities increase property values and enhance the economic vitality of business areas and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, we, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Warren, do hereby proclaim April 29th, 2015 as Arbor Day in the Town of Warren. We urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, we urge all citizens to plant and care for a tree to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this and future generations. Date is the 7th day of April in the year 2015.
Motion to sign?
Motion to sign, second.
Motion is made in second, is all in favor?
Aye. Do you need to, Mr. Lacy?
All right, Treasury warrants and invoices.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion that we approve. Payroll warrant number 82 in the amount of $36,510.37, and vendor warrant number 83 in the amount of $179,374.80, dated April 6th, 2015. I'll second.
Motion is made in second, is any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. The fiscal year 2016 budget, the board's gonna be looking at that on Saturday. The only thing I do want to say is, is that there will be an additional five articles included on the annual town meeting. They are petitionary articles, and they have the correct number of votes and so forth, so it will be included on the annual town meeting. I'll go to other business, Mr. LaF.
I have nothing, I don't need to know this issue.
And I have nothing. So we have a temporary occupancy agreement for Route 67 at West Warren, resurfacing and related work for Mass D O T. And I'll entertain a motion to allow me to sign that.
So will. Second.
Motion is made in second, is all in favor?
Aye.
Just for the record, the next meeting date is April 11th, which is this Saturday at 9 o'clock. It's gonna be a working meeting with FinCom, that, it's an open meeting, but it will be strictly limited to FinCom, and it will be a working meeting in the Board of Selectmen. The next meeting will be April 14th at 7:00 PM, which is our regular meeting. And other than that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So will. Second.
Motion is made in second, is all in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned at 8:55. I'm sorry, 7:55.